Good evening. I call this March 28, 2023 Hybrid Administrative Meeting of the Board of County Commissioners to Order. Commissioner Casada is excused, and we will have a silent, a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Benson.
Please rise.
Thank you, Commissioner Benson. Announcements, item number three. I'm sorry, excuse me. Before I proceed with the rest of the agenda, I would like to read the following closed-meeting statements into the record. I offer the following statement regarding the closed litigation meeting held Tuesday, March 28, 2023 at 3:30 p.m. Only those items described on the published notice and agenda for the closed meeting held on March 28, 2023 were discussed at the closed meeting, and I need a motion for approval of this statement as it will become part of the minutes of this meeting.
Motion to approve the statement?
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And that passes. My second statement, I move that the Bernalillo County Attorney and the County Manager be authorized to proceed with the matters discussed in the closed meeting held on this Tuesday, March 28, 2023, within the parameters set by this commission to include negotiating and accepting proposed settlements offers from Kroger, Tiva, Allergan, Amneal, Walgreens, KVK Tech, Inc. Do I have a second?
Second.
And all those in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Aye. Yes.
Thank you. Item three, announcements, additions or changes to the agenda. Madam County Manager, are there any changes to the agenda?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair and Commissioners. Yes, one change, Women's History Month to be added to the agenda as item 4A under Proclamations, and that is all, and a vote is required for that change.
Thank you. I move approval of the agenda as amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we will proceed. Thank you. Item four, Proclamations. Commissioners, Commissioner Olivas.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. It's my pleasure to read this proclamation into the record this evening. Whereas, March is Women's History Month commemorating and encouraging the study, observance, and celebration of the vital role of women in American history and in contemporary times. And whereas, it is fitting to highlight and celebrate women in Bernalillo County government who have made history and continue to do so. And whereas, Bernalillo County government has a rich history of women in leadership, beginning with the first female elected county commissioner, Lucy Haramio, in 1973; the first female county manager, Vicki Fisher, who served from September 1989 to May 1990; and whereas, the first female county clerk, Velma Doughty, was elected in 1936; the first female county treasurer, Madam Nancy Beers, was elected in 2017; the first female county assessor, Karen Montoya, elected in 2007; and the first female probate judge, Eleanor Farina Decola, was appointed in 1950. And whereas, since 1973, 12 women have been elected or appointed to the Bernalillo County Commission, including Lucy Haramio, Patricia Cassidy, Jacqueline Schaefer, Barbara Seward, Teresa Cordova, Diana Arguleta, Michelle Luhon-Greisham, Maggie Hart Stebbins, Debbie O'Malley, Charlene Piscotti, Adrian Barboa, and Barbara Baca. Commissioner Barbara Seward was the first female Bernalillo County Commission Chair elected in 2000, and in 2019, for the first time, women held a majority of seats on the Bernalillo County Commission. And whereas, 37% of Bernalillo County government employees are women, and the current county manager, Ms. Julie Morcas-Baca, and the current county commission chair, Barbara Baca, and vice chair, Adrienne Barboa. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Bernalillo County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim the month of March as Women's History Month, recognizing the contributions of women at Bernalillo County are innumerable and growing each day.
I think that there was a photo opportunity since we have the first woman treasurer, and Nancy Beers would want to come forward and accept the resolution.
And I just want to say thank you to Commissioner Olivas. We didn't ask him to do this, so thank you.
I agree. Can I get the women to stand up and join together? And may we have other women from Bernalillo County join? Is that okay?
Right here, sir.
Sure.
Sure. Get some of the other women as well. Make you stand all by yourself. You're going to be in the center. Move over a little bit more right there, and if you all gather around.
All right.
Yeah, Tia.
I'm going to take the picture.
Women are always working. We're all in front of the note.
We have black women as our leadership and communication.
Betty, come on.
Ladies, Betty.
All right.
Put up my mother's voice on. Let's go.
Thank you.
Yeah, I know. I hear you.
That was nice. I loved that.
This group is half full of...
Powerful women. Thank you, Commissioner Olivas. Agenda item number five, Public Comment and Communications. For public comment, you will have two minutes to share your comments. You will then be notified when your time is up. For those participating via Zoom, you will be muted and moved to the waiting room. Should any of the commissioners have follow-up questions to your comments, you will have an opportunity to answer. Julianne, how many do we have signed up to speak? And please call the first speaker.
Madam Chair, we have four signed up this evening, all in person. We'll start off with Mr. Don Schrader, followed by Gerardo Cionello, followed by Joshua James Lawrence.
Imagine how much sicker our Mother Earth would be if all people old enough worldwide would own and drive cars like millions in the United States. I have owned no car for 43 years. I would not keep a car if given to me free, and if I were paid to drive it. I've ridden in no car for almost 22 years. Most people in the world cannot afford to own a car. Highways, streets, garages, parking lots smother millions of acres of fertile soil needed for growing food and trees. Trees soak up the greenhouse gas carbon dioxide. Trees give oxygen. Now, at 77, I pledge publicly to never own a car the rest of my life. I have no car repairs, no car vandalism, no car theft, no flat tires, no parking fees, no traffic tickets, no monthly payments, no car insurance, no car crashes. I ride city buses, but I mostly walk. If we are physically able, walking is best for our health and for Mother Earth. Cars and planes are the worst for the climate crisis. I have flown in no plane for over 40 years, and I never will again unless I were forced against my will. We can wake up. We can change.
Thank you, Mr. Schrader.
Gerardo Cionello, Joshua James Lawrence, Anthony Aragon.
My name is Antonio Aragon. I'm from the community of Barelas, and I would like to express my great appreciation for the women of my Bernalillo County and what they have done. I was raised by good and great women, and fierce too, when they also taught me how to be. I say this with the highest respect intent. I am a veteran of 26 years. I'm a fourth-generation military descendant. I am native New Mexican. I come from the Baca Torres and Aragon bloodline in the state of New Mexico. I am heir to three different landowners. I asked my grandfather, "How did that happen?" And he said, "Somebody jumped a fence and trees." No one laughed at that time, but nevertheless, I come wholeheartedly of trauma that I've received, not only starting in Bernalillo County, respectfully saying, and ended up in the hands of the state of New Mexico Army National Guard. I am military sexually traumatized. I say this with the highest respect intent. I plan to be friends with Bernalillo County as I always have been. I also plan to be, I'm also police-friendly and, of course, government-friendly, but I feel at this present time, I'm looking out of lens with victimization eyes, so to speak. I've now been accepted into a program in my Veterans Administration Hospital where I have to be seen for the next month, starting next week. My process that starts here in Bernalillo County will probably end up in Washington with the Department of Justice, and I say this with the highest respect intent. I plan to be Bernalillo County's friend and stay friendly, knowing that I am a Latin patriot, and I plan to stay that way even to the time of my death.
Thank you.
I ask Bernalillo County, be friends with me in my community, city, county, state, and country as a disabled veteran at 100% disability. Please forgive me for going over my time.
Thank you, Mr. Aragon.
Hello, Bernalillo County Commissioners. I am Joshua James, former candidate for Bernalillo County Sheriff, and now a candidate for Governor of New Mexico. There are some laws that have been passed recently, and more to come across the governor's desk, that violate the rights of the people. And I just want to inform you, in case you are unaware, that way you can't say that you didn't know, that your duty, no matter what, until your job is done here, is to the Constitution. And just because a corrupt legislature or an ignorant legislature decided to pass laws that are repugnant to our Constitution, regardless if the governor of this state, ignorant or on purpose, as well pass laws that are repugnant to our Constitution, both state and federal, it is your duty still to ignore any laws that are repugnant to our Constitution. As soon as these laws are passed, it'll be a crime for those of us that fight for election integrity to question that integrity, and that's a violation of our rights, as voting is one of our rights, and as you all are servants to us. And we don't serve our servants. You serve us. It will be no longer available to us to get records requests from our county clerks or from the Secretary of State, so that we can view your communications, so that we can see what's going on behind the scenes. And as we've already collected a lot of evidence to communications between Secretary of State and county clerks and county commissioners, when it has to do with our last election and election prior, there was a lot of crimes that were committed.
Thank you, Mr. James.
So, I ask you, I beg you, to follow your heart, to follow our Constitution, and uphold your duty. Thank you. God bless.
Gerardo Cionello?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair and County Commissioners, for serving our community and allowing us to practice our First Amendment rights. My name is Gerardo Cionello. One New Mexico citizen said, and I want to quote what she said, "The session is over, and the governor has signed most of the bills on her desk. So should we laugh, cry, take a nap, or get to work fighting some of the bad legislation that's about to go into effect?" End quote. In fact, this will affect Bernal County and other 32 counties. And I don't know if you recall that you got the New Mexico Constitution, Article 4, Section 1 is a referendum for HB 7, SB 13, SB 397, HB 4, and SB 180, had been created and handed to the Secretary of State. Some of those bad legislation bills are voting rights and election integrity. Now, can we be honest to each other as civilized American citizens in this society? As a New Mexico resident, taxpayer, husband, parent, and alternative health doctor, as well as a minister, somewhere deep within our hearts and souls, that something is not right in our culture today. And we seem to have a hard time to escape the chaos, lies, deceptions, and false narrative, which I call demonic strongholds, within our souls, marriage, family, county, state, and nation. May God help us. I know some of you believe in God. Do you remember praying during 9/11 attacks? I was one of those, God. 2001 for our nation. Do you remember that? I remember those times very well. The church was full, was full. Why? Because we prayed to God for mercy, grace, peace, and forgiveness. And one of the reasons I came to America, well, let me go back then. Otherwise, some of us would not be in here today. And one of the reasons I came to America as a legal immigrant is that I was attracted to its motto, "In God we trust."
Thank you, Mr. Chenela.
Over 22 years later, are we losing that motto? And almost done, are our state and nation becoming more godless culture?
Thank you, Mr. Chenela. Thank you. Your time is up, sir. Thank you.
And that concludes public comment.
Thank you. Item six, Approval of the Minutes. I move to approve the March 14, 2023 Administrative Meeting Minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that is approved. Item seven, Approval of the Consent Agenda. Madam Clerk, can you please provide resolution numbers for items 7A, 7F, and 7G?
Yes, Madam Chair. For item 7A, AR 2023-36, 7F, AR 2023-37, and 7G, AR 2023-38.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The consent agenda has been published and made available to the public. Therefore, I move to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Madam Chair?
Oh, yes.
I have one question on the consent agenda, if I may. I'm not sure if there's anybody here that can answer this, but on item A of the consent agenda, uncollectible accounts receivable records, I'm not sure if this would be from legal or budget.
Madam Chair, just a point of order. If we're going to have questions on consent, we should probably move it off. Consent for formal presentation for later on in the agenda.
Okay.
So is that something, and I'll defer to the chair if that's something you want to do.
Sure.
So, I move, let's see, that we move item A on the consent agenda, AR 2023-36? And where will we move it to?
It'll become, it'll be moved to Section 9 under Adoption Resolution as item 9F, and we will require renumbering from the clerk for the consent items.
Okay, so let's, I move that, we move this consent item, and do I have a second to move that? Yeah, second. So it's been moved and seconded to amend the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and Madam Clerk, then we need to renumber the resolution items? Is that what you're saying, Julianne? Sorry.
Yes, correct. So we'll start with 7F as 36. Madam Chair, item 7F is AR 2023-36. Item 7G is AR 2023-37.
Thank you. Okay, so if there are no other changes, the consent agenda has been moved and seconded. Any discussion, all those in favor of the consent agenda being approved, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and that's approved with the changes. Item eight, on the agenda, Adoption of Ordnance Amendment to the County Code, 8A, Technical Services, Water Conservation, Floods, Roads and Bridges, and Subdivision Ordnance Amendments. Madam Clerk, can you please issue ordinance numbers for the items below A1?
Yes, Madam Chair. Item 8A1 is Ordnance 2023-4.
Okay, item two.
Ordnance 2023-5.
And item three?
Ordnance 2023-6.
And four.
Ordnance 2023-7.
Thank you. Thank you. So, Brian Lopez is here to speak. Please.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, good evening. I'm Brian Lopez. I'm the Technical Services Director. I have a lot of my team here with me. We'd like to present our Technical Services item for the adoption or the ordinance amendments to the County Code, Technical Services, Water Conservation, Flood, Roads, Bridges, and Subdivision. This item is part of an effort to update our technical standards and replace the 1988 Street Standards. This ordinance changes was originally brought before the Commission on February 7 of this year, and also advertised at that time, where we have been monitoring input to the different ordinances, being Chapter 30, Water Conservation, Article 7, Chapter 38, Floods, Articles 3 and 4, Chapter 66, Roads and Bridges, Articles 2, 4, 5, and 6, and then Chapter 74, Subdivisions, Articles 1 through 9. We have routed these proposed changes through the County Planning Commission, which includes review by the local agencies, the Utility Authority, ABQ Ride, APS, the City of Albuquerque, NMDOT, NPNM, and all 173 neighborhood associations. We have also presented this item to NAOP, which did take it through its Government Affairs Committee twice. And within this outreach, there have been mostly no adverse comments for the items, with the exception of a few. We did get a request from AMAFCA, which involves drainage permits, which is a Chapter 38. Currently, under the current system, drainage permits are required if grading involves more than 500 cubic yards of material. AMAFCA did ask that we lower that, as that amount is rather large, and they saw where that could create issues with the Royals and other things, depending on if a person was to bring in that much material onto their property. We did agree that that number was relatively high, so we are lowering that threshold to 200 cubic yards. We feel that that will be appropriate for the overall county and not cause undue burden to any particular individual, but will also address AMAFCA's concerns. We did also receive additional comment having to do with the maximum water usage per acre foot that was allowed, which we do feel we have addressed. So with that, and so those are the only two comments out of all the ordinance changes that we proposed. And so once again, with this, we're asking that the Commission approve the adoption of the ordinance and amendments, which were included in the item, and myself and my team will stand for any questions.
We now need to convene a public hearing, and do we have anyone to speak? And then I would offer that, public testimony, and then questions from the Commission, too.
Madam Chair, we have no signups for this evening. However, we did receive one written comment from Ms. Elaine Hebard, and that will be incorporated into the record.
Thank you. So are there any questions for Mr. Lopez? So, let's see. Do we move approval for each individual item here, Julianne? Sorry about that.
Madam Chair, at the discretion of the Chair, you can move them all in one, or if there's going to be discussion on individual, then move them separately.
Thank you. Let me ask a question again. Any comments on any of these proposed ordinance changes? If not, then I would propose that we make, I will move approval of all four of these items on the agenda as written.
Second.
All those in favor?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to offer an amendment, if I could pass this out here. So I would request this floor amendment, item 8A4, Section 72-92, Quantification of Maximum Annual Water Requirements. ninety-two, quantification of maximum annual water requirements, section seventy-two dash ninety-two A and seventy-four dash ninety-two B on lines two, five, and eight in section A, as well as line ten in section B. My requested amendment is to strike the requirement of point two-five acre feet and insert the requirement of point three acre feet.
And I'll second the amendment, and then let us get some discussion on that, and maybe Commissioner, you can explain.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Really, the reason I'm requesting this amendment is that I fully agree with the provisions that require a developer, or actually more accurately, a subdivider, this is in the subdivision ordinance, to ensure a sustainable water supply for duration of seventy years for all parcels of the subdivision. And so I feel it's necessary, from a water conservation and land stewardship perspective, to ask the body to make this requirement a bit higher to factor in the inevitable impacts of climate change and increasing population density and other factors that aren't currently accounted for in the water use requirement calculation. But I feel need to be included in this to ensure that communities across our county have adequate water supply into the future. And again, this is a requirement for the individual or entity, whether it's corporate or individual, to prove or provide, whether through acquisition of water rights, engineering studies, hydrology studies on their well, or other means, acquiring those resources through the Water Authority, that sort of thing, to prove that they have the water for seventy years at this level of point three acre feet per year.
Any other comments? Commissioner Benson, yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Olivas, so your request is to increase the amount of water available? Is that correct?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Benson, this is to increase the amount of water required to be produced by the developer or subdivider. So this is, we have no control over the end user metering or using water. This is over the, the developer must provide that amount of water for each individual subdivision or each plat that they create.
Okay, and the rationale is? Why? Again?
So again, the reasoning here is that the calculations presented, I really want to commend Mr. McGregor and Mr. Lopez and their staff. I went through quite a bit of back and forth with them, looking at why they're changing this. So currently, the requirement is for the developer or subdivider to provide point six acre feet of water for their development. So that means they must acquire those water rights at a point six acre feet standard. So we are lowering the amount of water that a developer must produce or show that they can produce for an individual dwelling unit. Either way, we're lowering that requirement. And the reason that we're lowering that, per extensive conversations with our staff and very good research, is that we now have low-flow fittings and, you know, highly efficient washing machines, dishwashers, all the appliances, coupled with zero landscaping, things like that. And so my ask here is to slightly reduce our decrease so that we can factor in future impacts of climate change and extensive groundwater pumping related to higher density and just more development, higher population.
Okay, so the developers would be required to produce less water than they are now, but more than what we were originally proposing?
Correct.
In case there's less water to be tapped into in the future? Is that the rationale? So my only question is, if they're producing that much more, isn't it possible that the consumer will use that much more?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Benson, there's no way for the county to control the end user's water use. So the only mechanism we have to really insert ourselves in water use or water requirements is through the subdivision ordinance and the requirements expressed in subdivision. Once a dwelling is built, a well is drilled, or they're hooked up to the Water Authority system, they're bound by requirements of the state engineer or the Water Authority or whatever jurisdiction they're procuring water from.
Gotcha. We don't have a control over it unless we'd made it point two-five acres per acre foot. And then they would be restricted in that amount, correct? So right now, the modification would allow them to access more water, which is fine with me, but if the concern is using our natural resources and water preservation, wouldn't this go against water preservation? I'm just trying to understand.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Benson, so no, I actually think this has the opposite effect, because this is requiring the developer to acquire more water than we know the end user is going to typically use. So we know based on typical use of a household, based on, you know, low-flow appliances and showerheads, all the things that we have in structures now that are also part of this code, other sections of this, the water conservation requirements, things like that, we know the average use, and this is just making sure that we have some cushion there for ecosystems, for aquifers, aquifer recharge, for all those kinds of things that water also gets used for, that aren't factored into human consumption.
But people can still use more water with the new point three acres per foot versus the point two-five acres per foot. We don't control it, I agree. But they can still use more water, based on your amendment.
Commissioner Benson, no, there's no provision for us to control water use regardless of that requirement. So the point two-five would not limit someone to using point two-five acre feet. It's only a requirement that applies to the subdivision process. It doesn't apply to the end user.
Does this allow the end user to access more water?
No.
No. It creates a, the developer has to create greater water flow? This is a new amendment to me, so I'm just trying to understand the difference here.
If I may, I want to let the staff explain what their ordinance proposal is, and then what this proposed changed, change would.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Benson, Commissioner Olivas. So we have the expert here. The main goal of why we initially went from the change from point six, point two-five, is in situations like this, if a question came up, we had to be able to defend the number that we came up with. And so that's why we are, that's why we're proposing to reduce it to point two-five. Now, as far as how the point two-five number came up, I'm going to hand it over to Dan, because he's done a lot of research on how we got to that number.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, my name's Dan McGregor. I'm the section manager for Natural Resources Services Section, and I've got my staff with me. Megan Marcy is the Water Conservation Person. Corbin Carzoot's our new county hydrogeologist, and Colly Bronson, our Stormwater Program Lead. And we've worked cooperatively. I've depended a lot on the research that Megan provided to me. So let's talk first about the public comment that we did receive. That was actually from Elaine Hebard. Her recommendation or request was to set that limit at oh point two acre feet per parcel. And where she was coming from is that is the standard that is imposed by the Water Authority on their subdivision review process. They participate with us in the county. The, that term maximum annual water use, it's kind of a two-edged sword, and Commissioner Olivas and I had this discussion. The information that Commissioner Olivas presented is essentially correct, and thank you for that very concise summary, sir, and I appreciate the accuracy in that. Under the State Subdivision Act, the county has a responsibility of setting what that maximum annual use number will be, reviewing proposals from the subdividers to see that that's being met, and then also having the subdivider prove up that they can provide that amount of water. And there's various ways that that can be done. OSC permits, water availability letters from the various water purveyors, or take your pick. The large, the first reference of this maximum annual water use came out in the nineteen ninety-six subdivision ordinance for Burnley County. At that point in time, they said that that was based on the relevant technical, or relevant state engineer's technical report. They didn't define what that was. It's probably Tech Report forty-eight. Somewhere, and I've not been able to chase it, an unreasonable value of oh point six was assigned. And we've carried that value since nineteen ninety-six. It's never been reviewed. The Tech Report forty-eight was published in ninety-six. That's never been revised or updated. And so here we are, nearly thirty years later, with a value that, when I get called on the stand, an expert witness testimony, which has happened to me twice now, I've not been able to defend. And just as an aside, one of my career goals was to get this number changed, okay, to something that is reasonable. So I'm glad it's here today, wherever we end up. But the most recent studies by the state engineer were done under a consulting contract with a company called AquaCraft. That was done in twenty thirteen. The numbers that they came up with for what they refer to as class-one homes, and I'll come back to that in a moment, for indoor water use was point one-seven acre feet per parcel. And applying that, or per household, applying, excuse me, per cap of the day. The, when we apply that to average households in Burnley County, that gets us up to the point one-seven. And then we end up adding in another forty percent factor for outdoor irrigation, because it's only based on the interior. Where that ends up is we end up with a factor of about point two-two. And that is the large reason for my recommending the point two-five, is based on the state engineer report. That is a statewide number. The class-one homes are those that are subject to implementing the EPA water standards, which is at the heart and soul of the water conservation ordinance and has been for a number of years. And that is how I got to the point two-five. The other factor in that point two-five number that I'm recommending partially was consideration of the Water Utility Authority standard of the point two. Part of it is looking at water availability statements from other water purveyors outside of the municipal area, particularly Intronosa, which is the primary water purveyor out in the East Mountains. They also have a requirement of developers to cap that at point two-five. And I don't have any solid basis for recommending a point three. The issues with climate concern, they're well taken. One of the other provisions for proving up new groundwater supplies in the ordinance amendments is that a reduction in recharge factors in the computer modeling will have to be put into place to address that particular concern on new supplies being developed. So that's how I got to the point two-five. You know, as a professional geologist, eighteen years' experience in doing this, the point two-five is my recommendation. And hopefully, that addresses the question. Madam Chair, Commissioner Benson, more particularly, Commissioner Olivas is correct. We can set this standard wherever we choose to set it. It's really up to the Water Utility Authority, to Intronosa, to the individual well owner, to exercise what they can do to be at that point two-five. But we have no control. There's nothing that says that they can't produce more. In the case of the Water Utility Authority and also Intronosa, they use a block rate scheduling so that overuse is penalized economically in the water bill, but we have no real direct control. We do have provisions for water waste in the water conservation ordinance, but that's pretty much when it's running down the street, spraying onto others' property. It's not really a quantity-based observation. You know, the part of the reason for that is because the water purveyors have meter data, that they can go back and they can do their customer reviews. The county is not a water purveyor. We don't have access or ready access to that data. And hopefully, that provides the explanation that's needed. Happy to stand for any other questions.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Benson.
Yes, sorry. So can you help me understand the difference between the point two-five and the point three-zero? Which creates greater water conservation?
I would say that the point two-five is the more conservative standard, only in that it is forcing the developer, the subdivider, to demonstrate to us through his water conservation plans imposed in the water availability statements, that that is the expectation of that subdivider, to meet that point two-five standard and not go over it. And then it's between the provider and the subdivider to figure out what's going to happen if they do.
Sure. So then, so yeah, that was my, that was just my question, is point three just allows for greater water usage if that is available? Now, we can't determine or control who uses what water, but this would just be, allow more water usage to be done. So I just wanted to make sure, based on the language of the amendment, what we're doing and why.
Yeah.
It's still fifty percent of the current.
Correct.
But it's not as conservative as you originally had.
That's correct. And one other factor coming into this is, in looking at the Office of the State Engineer, various restrictions on domestic well use, particularly in critical management areas where water resource is limited, they set a requirement for those individual domestic wells at point two-five and acre feet per well or per household, and that's when they're under tight constrictions. The other side of that, from the state engineer report, they allow shared wells of up to fourteen households per individual well, which I'm not comfortable with, and we have other provisions to limit that from happening. But when you do that, and the total production from those wells is capped at three acre feet, and that works out to about a point two-one-five, I think, something like that. So again, that's part of the reason I went to the point two-five.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
So I have a couple of comments, questions. So whenever we start talking about water use, it always is a very complex and difficult to understand, but it makes me feel a little uncomfortable that, I mean, one of the things you said is you wanted to change it to something that is reasonable, is do you feel that going from point six to point three is reasonable, this amendment that Commissioner Olivas has proposed?
I feel that moving from point six to point two-five is reasonable with respect to Commissioner Olivas's desired change. And again.
But more conservative, you said?
Because it is more conservative. From a professional standpoint, it is in agreement with the most recent data from the Office of the State Engineer and with a large number of other entities that are using the standard that's even less.
And have you asked the state engineer to weigh in on this proposed change to our ordinance? Do we have an opinion from the state engineer about that?
Did we have the discussion with Molly?
No, we've not. Aside from the publication process, where the state engineer could have chosen to weigh in, no, ma'am.
I would have liked that. So my other concern is, is when we talk about climate change, which we all know is real, and we all know we are dealing with, yet we can't quantify how that, you know, the lack of water that we know we will have in the future is a real concern when we make these kinds of decisions. And there's a hundred-year water plan that the state has put forward, but I believe, I haven't, I'm sorry, fifty-year, right, that the state has put forward. And do you have, are you privy to that? I haven't seen that. And we both sit on the Water Authority Board, and, you know, I would like to talk about those kind, you know, the implications of, because they talk about the reality of less water as we're talking about more people and more development, because that's our role here with the subdivision ordinance, is the possibility of subdividing properties, more wells being drilled, or urban development, urbanization. And so my concern is, is that are we moving this forward without being aware of what the ramifications of that fifty-year water plan are for the state?
Madam Chair, I don't believe so. Yeah, and I've taken a look at the draft of the fifty-year water plan, and the primary takeaway for me in changing these amendments. And the primary takeaway for me in changing these amendments was to be sure to include that in the computer modeling for the groundwater supplies, that the amount of recharge that is assumed takes that into account. And that's the primary place for me for the climate change. We've also got issues in terms of moving desert landscaping, trying to do better jobs with stormwater harvesting, but not particularly pertinent to this ordinance. Because if, if we think about it, where, where is the water coming from? And it's precipitation, recharge, groundwater. And whether that's coming from Intronosa, who has their wells in the Estancia Basin, the water utility, which, you know, thankfully they've got a balanced portfolio now between the, the surface water and groundwater, as I'm sure you all are aware. It's really about where, where in our planning can we apply prudent numbers to account for that? And it's really in those computer modelings and long-term projections. And that's why I've included that particular provision when we're talking about developing new groundwater supplies.
Well, but there, but there, it's still an uncertainty. I mean, and we know that precipitation is getting less and we are all concerned about the fact that we are in a drought, even though we have thankfully this snowpack this year. This is, this is not something that water managers are saying, phew, we're done with that. We still need to continue to look forward to the, this lack of water as we're approving developments and, you know, so forth. So my question again is, do you don't think that it's this reduction down from our current point six acre feet to Commissioner Olivas's point three is a reasonable change? I mean, maybe it's not your desire, but do you feel that that, that it's a reasonable, reasonable change moving forward?
Commissioner, as I said, my recommendation is the point two five. Again, you know, I've based that on the factors that, you know, I've elucidated. And again, it's largely because of the water conservation standards that we now have in place, which are based on the EPA water sense standards, which the O S C data basically shows us that using those standards, the average home in New Mexico that is, which uses those EPA's water sense fixtures, we should, we will be getting to a point two two, point two three.
We will be getting to, but we're.
And again, that applies to the new development that is the new development standard that we've been using now since the last revision on the water conservation ordinance. And so I'm trying to bring that number in line with our water conservation standards. And again, that's, that's why I'm arguing for the point two five. And as a bit of an aside, if, if you ask the joke, if, the joke, if you ask a question, what's two point two, two plus two? My wife, the accountant, will tell you four. My boss, the engineer, will tell you it's four point oh, but we're going to double it. And if you ask me as a geologist, I'm going to tell you it's somewhere between three and five. And if you ask, and if you ask the planner, they're going to say four is a totally satisfactory answer for now, but we're going to have to check it again in a few years.
So could, with that logic, I mean, could we go to this, change this with this amendment to point three and then look at it again and, and determine whether that's working? And then we move to another, another increment if we see that that is appropriate in the future?
And Madam Chair, let me phrase it this way. And Commissioner Olivas, you heard this the other day. My job as staff and as a professional is to give you my best recommendation. My best recommendation is point two five. The purpose is that, is to inform your policy decisions. Where you choose to go with the policy hopefully is based on that number, but is entirely your decision to make the policy as to where we're going to go.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Benson.
A follow-up question, thank you. So, so the point three would allow for more water usage, but it seems like it, it might be a little easier for adjustment now. If we're going from point six to point three for, for developers, potentially less of a strain on new construction or new household uses, plus it allows some cushion there in terms of water usage. Is that a true statement?
And Madam Chair, Commissioner Benson, it's a great question. And then that's the key question that, that you're struggling with right now. And again, I get back to the fact it's a two-edged sword. One, you want to clearly state what, what your water conservation goal is, and you want that as restrictive as is achievable. Water utility is achieving point two. Intronosa says they can achieve a point two five. The other side of that is if you're wanting them to prove up more, then you set that standard higher, but you give up that clear definition of your water conservation goal. And that's the conundrum that we're in.
Okay, so aside from the water conservation goal though, now in terms of the practicality of, of moving forward with, with new development, would this make it easier in that adjustment from point six? When it's going from point six to point two five versus point three zero?
And Madam Chair, Commissioner, so the, I think the best way I can answer that is it's a question of what is the upfront cost for the developer? And what's the difference in point oh five acre foot of water? So it's going to be point oh five times probably fifteen or twenty thousand dollars for every acre, for every parcel that they've got to do. And unfortunately, I don't have that math at the top of my head. But, but that's basically how we would get to an economic impact number.
Okay. And then last question, you talked about having to defend point six and you couldn't do it. Is point three defendable?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Benson, I would feel a whole lot better stand going on the stand at point three than I do at point six. Let me phrase it that way. Again, you know, they would say, well, what is the basis for point three? Why couldn't, why isn't it point four? And I don't have any literature, surveys, standards. An attorney, good attorney would probably look at and say, well, wait a minute, you work with the Water Utility Authority. Why didn't you choose point two? And so again, I'm trying to find the sweet spot. I'm not going to tell you it's the absolute correct number. Is point three a better number? That truly is a policy decision.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Well, I have a little, I'm just a little bit concerned and, and I mean, how long have you been working on this? It would a deferral of this particular item so that we can weigh in a little bit further so that there is more clarity to what this really means to us as we move forward with approving of these subdivisions?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I really do not want to see a deferral this evening. There are a lot of other things involved with the technical standards in view of the water conservation ordinances. These are all kind of part and parcel.
So you would prefer.
I don't think we're going to be able to provide any additional clarity to the discussion than what I've provided you tonight. Commissioner Olivas and I have been going around for a couple of months. And, you know, so it really, I think, again, my best advice is point two five. My other best advice is go ahead and make a decision this evening because I don't think we're going to give more clarity to it. So it's kind of, and I don't mean to sound challenging with this, but I think making a decision tonight, whichever way it goes, I could defend. And I would be okay doing that, but it really is going to be a policy decision rather than a technical decision.
So you and Commissioner Olivas have talked this through and, and his proposal of, of point three you could live with? And you would rather that, I, that's what I heard you say. And you would rather that than defer this to get more clarity for the rest of us who have not been talking about it for two months. I mean, I trust my colleague here, I trust you. What we want to do is make, you know, we don't want to be difficult and, and cause unnecessary delays and.
Madam Chair, if I may, there's, there is one other little factor in this, and it's a, a staff loading issue, is if we set a standard of point three and Intronosa comes in and tells their developer that, no, we're only going to allow you to go to point two five. Part of the subdivision process, this has to go back up to the state engineer for the major subdivisions, for them to review that. And if we get differing numbers in those available, availability statements, it creates a bit of confusion. And that's part of the other reason I'm pushing so hard on this point two five. We already have that issue with the Water Utility Authority availability statements. We usually can work with the state engineer and the subdividers to get around that, but it will probably reduce that confusion by about half if we go to the point two five versus the point three. But like I say, it's manageable either way.
But point two five is still different from what the Water Utility.
It is, correct.
So it's not identical.
That's why I say we reduce the burden by half.
Commissioner Olivas?
So I, I want to make clear here that, that my point in this amendment is to set, in my opinion, what is actually a more stringent standard than the point two five that is proposed. Because this requirement applies to the subdivider. The subdivider must procure water rights showing that the parcel they, parcels they are dividing have, you know, if it's, if it's four parcels, just so we have nice round numbers here, then point two five times four is one acre foot of water. They have to purchase one acre foot of water from someone. If that's the Water Authority, they have to have a water development agreement with the Water Authority, which comes with a particular cost for X amount of water that they're going to need. So in setting a higher requirement, we are asking the developer or the subdivider to produce more water than they would at point two five. And so my point here is actually to ensure that there is more water available than what the point two five requires because we know that we are in a situation with an aridifying climate here. We're in a situation with dwindling aquifer supplies, less precipitation, less recharge because of ecosystem consumption first. So what I don't want to see is a situation where we have a development come in and occur. They produce water showing the point two five requirement. Climate is changing and down the line, now in fifty years, this community no longer has water because we didn't ask them to produce enough water to satisfy what the community would, would need under the changing conditions of the future. So I know that, that we're kind of getting caught in, in, I mean, this is a very complicated subject to, to the chair's point. And so my intention here is to ensure that a development, whether small or large, whether it's mom and pop dividing their lot for their, for their children or grandchildren, or, you know, a ten thousand lot, you know, planned community, whatever it might be, that there is a adequate water supply available into the future. And so by requiring the developer to produce more water, it leads to additional security for the residents, for the ecosystems, for the community. Because ultimately, when I look into my district in the community of Carnwell, we permitted wells and, and, you know, all kinds of development up there. And we're now in a situation where we're facing over a hundred million dollar project to bring water and wastewater services into that community because the wells and water sources that were permitted to supply those homes for whatever the requirement was at the time, if it was this ordinance, it was seventy years, whoops, was no longer adequate. That wasn't enough water. And the conditions have changed to such degree in that community that now the public is on the hook for supplementing that water supply that, that isn't there. So my intent with this is to ensure that we don't go too far in reducing that requirement. Because again, this is a requirement that applies to the developer, not the end user. And the end user is ultimately governed by EPA standards, which determine how much water your faucet can use or, or, you know, energy department standards, which govern how much water your dishwasher can use. So with those factors affecting the end user, we will continue to achieve savings probably into, as, as you alluded to, we might get to point one five in actual usage inside a, in a household. But this gives us the cushion to have that water supply available for that community for longer.
And the question is assuring water availability?
And Madam Chair, Commissioner, and we could read the, the straight, the state regs, but basically it's the duty of the county commission, and actually, maybe I should do that. So there's three duties that are placed on the county in the State Subdivision Act. And maybe that's where we need to go with this. Ken, if I may, with your permission to read that. And in summary, those duties are to determine the maximum annual water requirements of subdivisions, address a water availability to meet the maximum annual water requirements of the subdivision. And Commissioner Olivas, I believe you were using the word produce. I would use the term prove up because it's not necessarily a physical production. It's a demonstration of capacity, so prove up. And here's the key, and to ensure water sufficient in quantity to fulfill the maximum annual water requirements of this, of the subdivision. And those are the key phrases here out of the subdivision act.
So it's to assure demonstration of capacity is what, what this subdivision requires developers to do?
Correct. And I, Madam Chair, Commissioners, again, you know, the, the quandary we have here is do we push for a more stringent water conservation goal? Or as a policy decision, are we going to put the emphasis on the proving up of that standard? And that, that really is the decision, I think, here in this amendment. And Commissioner Olivas, I hope you would agree with that statement.
I think that's an important statement. And proving up is what we don't really have. We, we don't have a measurement for what, you know, the, in, in the future, what is, what is climate change and the aridification of our desert southwest? You know, what is it going to look like? And so proceeding with caution on this, I think, is, is a wise thing. And so I'm going to vote for this amendment. Any other questions?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, if I may, one, one concluding comment. Again, I would respectfully remind you that in looking at this proving of seventy year water availabilities, we do periodically look at the capacities of the various systems. And we will be taking the climate change effects into account when we do that in terms of their computer modeling, those sort of things. So we can get at it either way. It's really a policy decision of which way do you feel more comfortable in proceeding? And one doesn't necessarily exclude the other.
Mr. Martinez, did you have a?
Yeah, I'm trying to, there we go. I would just suggest that if we're going to vote on the items, we do just one through three. And then for clarity, do item four separately because that one, you'll have to vote on the amendment before you vote on the item. Just as a, a methodology move forward.
Thank you. Commissioner Barboa, you got a comment?
I was just going to say I moved to approve the amendment.
Oh, well, let's, let's do what our county attorney suggests that we, I, I change. I guess my motion was approval of one through four, so I will, I will amend my motion to approve one through three. It does not include this, the discussion of the water. And you, who seconded that? Would you agree to the second?
You may did, I just, I'll call the vote.
And so let's call a vote on those three because they seem non-controversial here. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we'll get to item four as amended. Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash seven, and there is a amendment and that has been seconded. And so any more discussion on that before we move forward for a vote on that last one as amended? Okay, and so we will, all those in favor of, oh, I'm sorry, thank you, Mr. Martinez, of, of the amendment as proposed by Commissioner Olivas, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, so now vote to the full item of the ordinance as amended. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Thank you all for your.
Commissioners, thank you for a very thorough discussion and consideration. I really appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, if you can repeat, who moved and seconded for number four?
Oh.
As amended.
As amended, I think I made the motion and Commissioner Olivas seconded.
Thank you.
Okay, item nine, adoption of resolution. Twenty twenty-three federal legislative policy priorities. Madam Clerk, can you please provide a resolution number?
Yes, Madam Chair, for item nine eight, A R twenty twenty-three dash thirty-eight.
Thank you. Chief of Staff Clay Campbell to present.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Clay Campbell, Chief of Staff of the County Manager.
Clay Campbell, Chief of Staff of the County Manager. And before you tonight to present the administrative resolution that outlines Burnley County's 2023 federal legislative policy priorities, this work builds upon resolutions in the past with similar content. And this year, we also include the acknowledgement of three congressionally-directed spending requests that we had to submit earlier this month to the offices of Senator Ben Ray Lohan, Senator Martin Heinrich, and Representative Vasquez. These requests are outlined in your pack, but briefly, they include our top priority, which is for Atresco Vista Boulevard, that has been submitted to both Senator Heinrich and Representative Vasquez on the housing censusides, under T-HUD accounts for economic development and highways. The second item we have is a request from our General Services Division to Senator Ben Ray Lohan for a cold cases and indigent cremation, and there we're trying to seek some DNA funding to deal with remains that have been unidentified for several decades now. The third item that we're seeking congressionally-directed spending on is for electric vehicle charging stations, and this would just be for some initial design to deal with the capacity that the county would need to establish for a fleet of electrical vehicles. And we also have statements in our resolution that affirm our support, the county's support for the Water Utility Authority and to the Carnwell Water and Sewer Situation, which touched upon some of the last agenda topic issue. And then also, we have a statement of support for the City of Albuquerque and their efforts to secure federal funding for Pasado Norte Northwest, where it's going to intersect with Atresco Vista. And I have a message into the city, I've not gotten back to them, or they've not gotten back to me, rather to confirm what they have actually applied for.
I'm having a little time hard hearing, I think I am a bit of a vegan, but-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, thank you, thanks.
Should I speak louder?
Please, that's better, it may be now.
Okay. What I was saying was that, you know, we've submitted three congressionally-directed spending requests, but our resolution also affirms Burnley County's support for two additional items that aren't formal requests. One is what the Water Utility Authority is submitting for Carnwell, for a sewer project out there, I believe it's Phase Three. And then also for Pasado Norte Northwest, where it will intersect with Atresco Vista. The City of Albuquerque has got to do some more work to push that road and expand it west, so it can meet with Atresco Vista. So we have a statement affirming our support for their efforts to secure the capital money necessary for Pasado Norte. We do have some other resolution items in there that aren't part of our congressionally-directed spending accounts. One is, it's item 1D, and it's trying to tease out with the Housing and Urban Development Department, the resolution you all passed a while back, early this year, for Middle Rio Grande Housing Collaborative, and trying to get that ball rolling with the federal delegation, as well as HUD, about what this commission is trying to achieve with the City of Albuquerque. So we're going to get that ball rolling right away, and I've got messages into our federal lobbyists to start getting the HUD meeting scheduled, so we can have those discussions this summer. We also have a continued item in there for continued support for data sharing, data integration, as it relates to behavioral health and criminal justice. And then a third thing that we have in there that I'd like to highlight came from our Public Works Division. And this is about making culverts and bridges in Burnley County eligible for federal money for improvements, even though these facilities aren't on the federal highway register. So we're hoping that that can be achieved. Our next steps after tonight, after approval, is to finalize our booklet that will elaborate on what you have in the resolution, and that will be distributed to the delegation, to all members of the New Mexico delegation, and we'll offer to have briefing times with them on the contents of the resolution in that booklet. And then also, like I said, following up specifically with HUD about the Housing Collaborative with the City of Albuquerque, as well as our delegation on Atresco Vista, because I know that that has some interest by members of the delegation. So with that, I stand for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Clay. I wanted just to thank you and staff for your hard work on this, because in a, in a quick turnaround, you did an excellent job, so thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioners.
Any other comments?
Ditto, appreciation.
Thank you for your support, I appreciate it.
Yes, Commissioner Olivas?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Chief of Staff Campbell, for, for your work on this and for including us, us new commissioners in, in this as, as quickly and efficiently as possible. I just want to highlight that, that I think this strikes a really nice balance between economic development, addressing issues in the criminal justice, behavioral health space, and, and basic infrastructure and, and climate change from electric vehicle charging. Couple of things that you, you didn't highlight that, that I just want to, you know, harp on real quickly. You, you did mention the Carnwell Sanitary Sewer, that's a really important project in my district to provide water and sanitary sewer service to folks that do not have this or have very limited access to clean water and, and safe sewer. I think it's also really important in here that we have support for medication-assisted treatment, that's an important program that's going on at our jail. Credit to our, our county manager for leading the way in the state on that and, and getting that into our facility to, to provide that important treatment to, to individuals in that facility. And then also, I think I want to commend you for including a currently air force-based fuel spill. We talked about that extensively at our Water Authority meeting last night. It's a serious issue that, that has an impact to the water that we all drink, or most all of us in, in Burnley County. So really happy to see that that's on here and appreciate all of the, the requests that you've worked in here and, and the, the ability to thread the needle here. So fully support this and appreciate your work.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Benson?
Clay, thank you so much. I also want to piggyback on what Commissioner Olivas was saying. With the support of Pasado Norte, the northwest corner has been the fastest-growing area of Burnley County. And even though it's a city initiative, it, it will definitely impact the county, especially once Atresco Vista gets out there, and then that, that helps connect Sandoval County and, and West Side and East Side. So it's a very important priority, even though it's not necessarily under our jurisdiction, that your added support for that means a lot to me and District Four, as well as District One.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Baca's area, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. So I move approval of this administrative resolution establishing Burnley County's 2023 federal legislative policy priorities, and secondly, approval of the federal congressionally-directed spending requests. Do I have a second? Second by Vice Chair Barboa. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you, Clay.
Thank you.
Okay. Item nine B, we have Marcos Gonzalez, notice of intent for Caia Cuarta Limited Partnership, LLP.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just like to note, we had a small little error on the motion, so you'll actually, instead of voting on the approve, a resolution, it will actually be a notice of intent. So with that, Madam Chair, members of the commission, the Economic Development Staff recommends the approval of the amendment to approve a notice of intent authorizing the Burnley County Commission to approve a non-project revenue bond application on behalf of Caia Cuarta Limited Partnership, LLP, an affiliate of Y E S Housing, Inc. The application requests that the county facilitate a property tax exemption for the benefit of a 61-unit affordable housing development, to be called Caia Cuarta, by holding the property in the name only throughout the lease term. The process for facilitating the abatement mirrors the process used for project revenue bonds, as outlined in the county's economic development policies. I'll stand for any questions.
I just want to say, this is in your packet, there's a description of this, and it's a very important project, that this is a long time coming. It's a City of Albuquerque-Burnley County partnership. It, it provides for 61, is it?
Yes.
Units? And so this is a very exciting project on the near north valley on Caia Cuarta, Fourth Street.
Yes, it's on, Madam Chair, it's on Fourth and Fitzgerald Street. And as you said, it's a, a large development project taking on by Y E S Housing, that will be for the affordable housing component, and then separate and apart from the affordable housing piece with the tax exemption will be a new, a retail area, and then as well as pad sites for future townhomes to go into as well. So the redevelopment of a area right now that has vacant property.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Benson?
Just to clarify, Mr. Gonzalez, I, I'm absolutely in support of this. It provides a lot of additional affordable housing, plus it's an incentive. It's, it's how we can partner with, with developers and local partners to do more and incentivize them to do more. One, one question, I just want to clarify, because when it comes to tax abatement and modifications, questions arise. But we're not, this is an abatement, it's not doing away with taxes, because we're not receiving any tax revenue currently. So this is an incentive that doesn't hurt the county financially, but it still incentivizes, correct?
Correct. Madam Chair, currently, the property is owned by the City of Albuquerque, so we're not collecting any property tax on it. We will, as part of, they'll pay an annual administrative fee to the county that we'll have to be able to have oversight and making sure that it's still compliant with the affordability.
Thank you. Again, I think it's a good move. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Olivas?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Benson just raised a point I wanted to, to ask a little more clarity on. Does, so, and I, dovetailing here, I, I fully support this, it's a great project, it's fully in line with our goals of, of increasing affordable housing and partnering with the city. But my, my question just being, at, at some point in the future, after, I believe, somewhere in here, I read 30-year span, will this hit the tax rolls at some point, or, or how does that work?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Olivas, correct, for the 35-year term that we have of the lease structure, it'll be tax exempt, and then once that 35-year rolls into 36, it will become taxable. So we'll go back on to the tax roll, so you'll receive taxes at that point.
Understood, thank you.
Thank you. And so I, I guess I need to move an amendment to this, so that we are not approving a resolution, but we are approving a notice of intent for Caia Cuarta. Do I have a second? A second by Commissioner Benson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and now we go to a vote for this item. Move approval?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Barboa. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Marcos.
Thank you so much.
Item nine C, Office of Criminal Justice and Behavioral Health Initiatives. This is about the Burnley County Winter Wellness Hotel Extension. Madam Clerk, can you please provide a resolution number?
Yes, Madam Chair. Item nine C is FR 2023-39.
Thank you. And Pam Acosta?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners. My name is Pam Acosta, Senior Manager with the Behavioral Health Initiative. Tonight, we're presenting on the, on the Winter Wellness Hotel Extension. I'm accompanied by Michael Barndahl, Vice Chair of our BHI Steering Committee, and Deputy County Manager and Chief Pettis, bringing before you a proposal from the Burnley County Health and Public Safety, which seeks $740,000 to, or $74260 from the Behavioral Health Initiative, its non-recurring funding. In November of last year, the Burnley County Commission unanimously approved a financial, financial resolution budgeting a fund balance appropriation from the Behavioral Health Initiative Gross Receipts Tax for the Burnley County Winter Wellness Hotel for a four-month period to house families during the coldest winter months. The proposed, proposed funding request this evening is to allow the county to extend the operating period of the Burnley County Winter Wellness Hotel for an additional six months, in order to, to secure stable housing for the remaining 24 on-site families. This item was presented to the Steering Committee and to ABCGC plus APS, and both recommended the proposal to move forward to the Burnley County Commission for consideration. If it pleases the commission, I will defer to Vice Chair Barndahl or Chief Pettis for further comments. Otherwise, we stand for any questions.
Chief?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, so again, it's an honor to be in front of you and bringing this item forward. We've had a lot of impact with the residents that are calling our hotel home, or have since we opened it during the winter months. Just a little bit of statistical data for you. So, so far, to date, we've serviced 71 families in our hotel. Eight of those families have had successful housing outside of our, of our hotel itself. We have 21 families that are currently awaiting housing, meaning they're on a list somewhere, or they have reconnected with loved ones that are willing to bring them in and house them, or, or other matters. Each of the individuals that are in our hotel currently today are employed and are working again to, to better their lives. In general, we have actually housed 80 children, which is a great number. And if we just kind of look at overall averages, we had an average of 40 rooms occupied during the first duration of the, of the project. We had 117 occupants total, average up to date, up to this point, 61 of which have been children, on average. And then 21 of those have been, 22 of them have been single mothers, and two have been single fathers. So again, making an impact. Our long-term goal is to find a long-term solution for individuals that are experiencing house homelessness, and eventually moving them into some type or form of long-term housing. So we, again, look for your support to allow us to continue the great work that Ben Chavis and his team are doing at the Wellness Hotel, and we will provide a full evaluation, as we did last year, at the conclusion, or at any time that you ask for it, on the project itself.
Thank you. Will entertain a motion, or do you have a?
Well, I just, yeah, I would move to approve. And I wanted to discuss it a little bit.
Okay, moved and seconded and discussion. Vice Chair Barboa?
Thank you. Yeah, thank you so much. Thank you for bringing more information today. I know last week I did ask for an evaluation, and Ms. Alasad was able to say, like, you know, we only do official evaluations on recurring funding, and I think to Commissioner Benson's point last time, it would be great to think about these programs in our long-term budgets and recurring dollar, all those things. Because like Commissioner Benson said last time, we want to cover what we've now, two years, sort of know is the extension, or if we're going to run a year-round program or not, or. But I, and I love the, I love the measures, I definitely support this, because it's success that we're seeing, and I just think if we, I, I think evaluation and then evaluation that we're having regular benchmarks and coming into, or in thinking about if we're going to move this forward for a longer term, or even do this every year for this, what are the, what are we learning, and how are we obviously improving every time? But great work, and thanks to all the folks that are making it happen. I, I got to meet with some of the family members from one of the hotels that are in my district, the city runs, and, you know, their message, the all in, you know, doing well, enjoying the supports they're giving, even had vouchers, and then weren't able to find the next step. So it's like, you know, but the continued care and, and the next step is another place. But thank you for this work.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Barboa, I will add too, that we do want to make, recognize the individuals that have been providing case management on site, so it's A-C-I-R, A-C-H-R. Central Sabina and Crossroads have been there weekly, providing case management to the individuals calling our hotel home, along with APS, who has provided case management and tutoring for the kids that are on site. In addition, monies from each of you, as Commissioners, have gone towards Locker 505, who have clothed everybody inside of the facility. So again, just another, another area I want to pay some recognition.
Thank you. Commissioner Olivas?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you all for, for being here before us today to, to present this item. I, I expressed some concerns when this was presented at the ABCGC about the way this is being budgeted. And as I, as I dove into this further, I think those concerns rise even higher in my mind, given that this was a program that was essentially piloted last year and run in a very similar way. I, I applaud the success and the impact that this is having on, on the families, the children that it serves, but I think it, it speaks to two things to me. One is that we're not being honest with the public here in, in the way this is being budgeted, and I, I don't mean that by the sense of someone being unethical or anything like that. I, I think it's just, it's a well-meaning project that was piloted, it was, it was piloted successfully, and, and, but we haven't moved it out of the pilot phase, despite the fact that I think it, it really is out of the pilot phase. And so I, I have a bit of a hard time again with this, you know, calling this a non-recurring funding. When we did it last year, we approved non-recurring funding for it, not this commission, but the, the one before us in, in the fall. And now we're doing it again, and, and I expect that we'll probably have a similar proposal again in, in the fall, and that, that's not to say that it's a bad idea, or that it's not impactful or well-meaning, but I think it's really important that, that we're very transparent about, about what this is and the impact that this is having on our overall budget. And, and the second point of what I'm trying to get at here is that it also speaks to the need, as this commission has expressed, for- for a larger look at our behavioral health system and our strategic plan. And so it's really important that these projects, whatever project it may be in the behavioral health space, fits into that overall plan, and that its budget is part of that, and that it's not, in a way, I feel like this is competing with the overall need for transitional housing services, right? We know we need that. It's a critical gap in our system here locally. But because we're doing this in a pilot way, but it's really a permanent pilot, we are, we're taking resources from a permanent solution and using it for something that's much more temporary. It's absolutely needed, and I just, I commend all of you for your work on this. I mean that from the bottom of my heart. But we have to get to a place where this is transparent, and this fits in with the overall plan, and addresses the long-term need. Because when we're spending a hundred thousand dollars for security for eight months, or for six months, you know, that's money that we could have spent on security for a permanent facility. Or when we're spending twenty-five thousand dollars for damage reimbursement. Again, that's money that could be going for a permanent facility or a permanent solution. And then, you know, the actual cost of the hotel rooms, again, three-hundred-and-forty-four thousand dollars for those rooms that, absolutely, we need them. I hear the impact that this is having on families in our community. But I just want to push that, you know, all of us together, the commission, working with our staff, with our subcommittees, we have to do better and find a way to build transitional housing. It doesn't have to look like this, whatever it looks like, transitional housing into our budget and into our behavioral health system in a way that's recurring and meets the need in partnership with the city, the county, the state, everybody at the table to address this gap. So, thank you.
Thank you. Madam County Manager, head of.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Olivas, first of all, I do appreciate your comments. I do agree with you that I think we should budget that as recurring funding. But I do want to let you know that the city had asked us, and I'm glad that they did, they asked us if we would run a facility. First of all, it was partnering with them originally, and then this year, we're doing it solely by ourselves. So we entered uncharted territory. We weren't sure if we were, if it was going to be successful. I didn't want to obligate the county on a recurring basis. We didn't know where we were going to go with it. But it looks like it's working. It's changing people's lives, and we do have a plan for a continuum that we will be presenting to you. And we talked a little bit about it, but we'll be presenting it to you. But I do appreciate your comments, and so we'll go ahead and we'll incorporate that as a recurring item, because it will take probably a couple of years for us to build a continuum. So I certainly agree with your comments. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Commissioner Olivas.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Vice Chair Barboya, and then Commissioner Benson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Commissioner Olivas, and thank you all for bringing this. And I just appreciate the discussion. I think last year, when we, and it was actually I that worked with the city, we're like, hey, we, and I think that's why, to me, I mentioned evaluation, and evaluation that we're consistently looking back to, because when we partnered with the city in last year, the sort of goal was to get people off the street, and the measure was to keep people from dying, right? And when you have that measure, then your population that you're serving is different. And it's not, there isn't a lot of places in Albuquerque, New Mexico, that are getting to those folks. And when you say from dying from weather, then that means you're not measuring whether they're currently using, or if they're sober, and if they're on a care plan. We're trying to do all that, but as you all have experienced, it's low-level entry. Then when we made this year's, Chief Pettis has designed it to have families as part of the unit, based on a need, I'm sure talking to the Steering Committee and the different subcommittees. But, like, in which, you know, which, what are we measuring, and what are we trying to do, and what are we trying to get to? Because I support both those populations of people, but they're different. And I guess after last year, I asked, so I know that, I asked for a debrief with the providers, and at that time, it was also ACR Albuquerque Recovery and Crossroads at that time as well, and now you've added a third. And I was delighted to hear about what they said, how they thought the program. One of the things that really stood out to me was the gentleman from ACR said, if you think about the problem, it's rings on a ladder, and every ring has a different level, entry point and level point, right? And a lot of, I talk about, a lot of times, our stuff is, we jump to the clinical social worker need, right? But we need multiple areas of entry points, different ways that people are entering into services. So just to say, agree, like, I want, I think this should be recurring in our budget. I think we need to have evaluations. When are we addressing the need with, those are different populations. And I just want us to get, like, I continually say, we can't choose good or bad, and so I want us to have that kind of data in front of us. What's the biggest need? I was looking at the presentation that maybe you all will be a part of, but, right? A big need was named mostly around adult males. So how are we then getting the data we have and saying, let's address the, then our next wellness maybe should consider adult males as their, I'm not, I support families with kids as well. I'm just saying, let's base it off the data and how we actually start to relieve the streets. But again, I support this, and yes.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, if I may just address that briefly, Commissioner Barboya. At the Housing Subcommittee, and I did mention this at the ABCGC AP plus APS meeting, we are taking a serious look at the housing continuum from emergency overnight shelter all the way through permanent supportive housing, and even beyond that residential treatment. And so point of entry is really critical. The spreadsheet that we're working with, and I'd be happy to share it with you, if you'd like to see it at some point, the spreadsheet we're working with addresses each specific population, the type of housing that's needed for that population, and then ultimately, where are the gaps in that continuum? So we're working on that. Part of it is a permanent solution for families. And as, as County Manager had just mentioned, there are some plans in the works for that, which I think you'll be excited to hear more about. And so, we're with you a hundred percent on that, and the Housing Subcommittee is working very, very hard on that.
Thank you. For your work, Mr. Barndahl. Commissioner Benson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to clarify, I, you know, I'm very proud of this pilot program. And I, I believe I understand the intent of Commissioner Olivas. I just take issue with the word that it's dishonest, because I don't think that's the case. I think this was very honest. And I'm very, I was part of the vote to approve this budget, and it was, it was a guess. We didn't know. We didn't know if this was going to work. We just saw the need, that there were, it was winter, a brutal winter, it was COVID. There weren't resources. And so, there were, this was a way to house people. And the fact that we're sheltering children, eighty children, I think this was a resounding success, and I'm also in support of making this an annual budget, which I'm sure you would love. So, yeah, I'm in support of it. But I just want to clarify that I think it was, I think it was prudent to start on a, as a pilot, as a one-time expense, and even do it again, because this, because it's continued to change. Instead of creating a giant platform with a ton of resources and budgets set, like the tiny village, which has never had a set budget, because it, there should have been a pilot program. But this was that, and so now we're getting a better idea of what the real needs are. And this wasn't, this wasn't year-round. It was just seasonal, and then we ended up expanding it because we saw the need. And actually, Chief Pettis, can you remind me, I remember being just kind of taken back by the actual transition, where the families that were staying there, at least that first year, ended up moving into permanent housing, and it was a greater ratio than any other project we've seen. And what was that?
So, Madam Chair, Commissioner Benson, if I remember, if I recall, it was about eighty percent is what we had that came out of that last one. And I will add to your point, too. One thing that, why we wanted to do a second pilot is the first year that we did it, we kind of just helped with whatever group we could help with, whoever needed sheltering, we brought them in and we dealt with it. This time, we made a very concentrated focus on one particular group, and that being families with children. And so now we've got two different data points that we can refer back to to determine which one makes the most sense for us as a county to move forward, while the city takes and moves forward with another. And we're kind of in that point now, where the city is taking a lot more of the single individuals, where we are housing the families. So that was really a lot of the reason behind trying to do two pilots, you know, each at around the same time of year for about the same amount of time, is really to give us that really solid data that we didn't have up to this point. So we do have it now, and it'll help us to make a lot more educated determination going forward on which group do we truly serve. I will also say that the security piece, I know that that's a hard one for us, but we learned last year that we didn't have enough security onsite. So this year, we upped our security, and only to find now that we're, with the twenty-four families, we really don't need as much security. So there is some in there that, some of that stuff may reduce as we get more familiar with the families, and we start to understand more of what their struggles are, or their needs or challenges are. We may be able to start reducing some of those expenses as well as we go through. We won't know that, though, until we actually get some more time with each of them. The three months that we've had isn't enough really to make those kind of determinations. But we're seeing great things. The families that are in there now, occupying the hotel, are dedicated to making a change in their lives and turning things around. So that's exactly what we're looking for.
Thank you. Exactly. Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
So, there's been a motion and a second. Any more discussion? And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. Item nine D, Office of Criminal Justice and Behavioral Health Initiatives, small provider grant increase. Madam Clerk, can you please provide a resolution number?
For item nine D, FR twenty-two-three dash forty.
Thank you. And Pam Acosta, again.
Again, Pam Acosta, Behavioral Health Initiative Senior Manager, and I'm accompanied with Vice Chair Barndahl. Bringing before you a proposal which seeks additional funding for the expansion of behavioral health services, specifically small providers in Burnaleo County, by an additional one million dollars, for a total of two million dollars over a three-year term. Last fall in September, this commission approved Financial Resolution twenty-two-two dash one-zero-four, budgeting a fund balance appropriation in the amount of one million dollars from the Behavioral Health Gross Receipts Capital and Startup for a small provider grant in Burnaleo County. As you may recall, the intended intervention allows small behavioral health providers, whose annual operating budget is five-hundred thousand dollars or less, to apply for funding via a formal RFP to expand or develop their services, which are not otherwise funded. As new providers emerge, and as existing providers demonstrate growth, the Behavioral Health Initiative and the BHI Steering Committee recognize and agree there is a greater need to increase the original funding amount to broaden the support to small providers. This item was presented to Steering Committee and to the ABCGC, ABGC, ABCGC and APS, and both recommended the proposal move forward to the Burnaleo County Commission for consideration. The motion would approve one million dollars in non-recurring funding for small provider capital and startup, and approve an appropriation of one million dollars from the BHI Gross Receipts Fund Balance, and allow the county manager to execute all agreements related to small provider RFP. As I mentioned, accompanied by Vice Chair Barndahl, and we stand for any questions.
Any questions? Commissioner Olivas?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had asked this question at ABCGC, and I'm not sure if you have the information. I really support this. I think this is a great way to grow our provider network, small, medium. Obviously, this doesn't apply to large providers, but grow them into large providers or larger providers. And my question was, what is the maximum amount of a grant going to be, or do we know?
Currently, we don't have a cap.
Okay, so someone could, in theory, apply for a million dollars, or half a million?
Correct.
And would they be, you know, okay, let's say we have twenty providers, I don't know how many, would apply for this sort of thing. Would that grant be rejected outright if it doesn't really fit in the, I'm just curious kind of what criteria you've created for this at this point?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Olivas, we haven't, we have the scope of work developed from the RFP, but we haven't created any barriers. I think that it would be negotiations, working with the providers who are requesting. Most of the requests that we're receiving through our DIA portal are less than a hundred thousand dollars. We've had a few that have exceeded that. So we're prepared for any dollar amount and to work with the providers as best as we can, and I think that would be part of the RFP review process.
Great. I really appreciate that, and I think that's, that gets to the heart of my question, and saying, you know, we're willing to work with providers, and it sounds like they're submitting requests that are reasonable in the context of the amount of money that we're putting into it, because I'm just thinking, you know, this amount of money could easily be exhausted very quickly if they're all very large requests. And so, as I said at ABCGC, I wonder if this is enough, you know, I think we may, we'll have to evaluate this and see down the line what's actually needed, and how successful it is as well before we, you know, put more into it. But I really support it. I think it's a good way to grow that network that we so desperately need. So, thank you.
Vice Chair Barboya.
Thank you. Thanks again. And so just to Commissioner Olivas's point, I think, you know, there are five-hundred thousand. I think we need to have some parameters for transparency and clarity. And I know that when I first started on the commission, there was like a vetting process that happened, that I was never really clear of. So I'd love to know, I think that's maybe what you were also asking, what is, like, the vetting process? Is that still involve the Steering Committee, like, what's the vetting process?
So, usually what we do with an RFP, it goes out for formal solicitation. And once we get the respondents, then we'll take, we'll usually ask someone from one of our subcommittees to sit in on the panel, on the review panel for the RFP, and to help us make that decision. The Steering Committee is involved in ideas that come through the portal to review them and make those recommendations initially. And then if there are some ideas that come through the portal, then they'll defer them to the appropriate subcommittee for housing intervention, prevention intervention, harm reduction, or crisis.
And the scope of work you mentioned, that guides whether folks would want to apply for this or not, even if we're not getting a cap. But the scope of work is generally just small behavioral health providers under, do they have to serve a certain populate, like, is there?
No, there is no, excuse me, they just have to be a behavioral health provider with an operating budget of five-hundred thousand or less. And that also excludes any grants that are afforded to them. We were excluding grant awards, because that's not guaranteed money. So there, that's pretty much, it's very broad, which allows for a lot of behavioral health providers to join in. We feel that this is the best way to approach this situation, because there's some small providers that may never be able to compete with the larger providers. And so we want to give them that opportunity.
Totally. Thank you. And for, when you say that one, so one or a person from the steering team gets to be involved in the vetting process, who decides who gets to be that lucky person?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Barboya, it's, basically, we put out a request. Once a proposal reaches a certain subcommittee, then the chair, in housing in my case, I would ask the members of the subcommittee if they would want to be involved in actually spending time with the staff reviewing the RFP. We've had as many as two members from a subcommittee on one, or one, it just depends on the size of the committee, the review committee that the staff puts together at that point. But we do have the opportunity, and I have to say, having done it twice myself, it's a lot of fun. So hopefully, that other people would agree with me and would get involved in this process. Thank you.
I guess that's part of my question, and maybe it's not for today to be answered, but I think of, like, I'd love to know what your, what is your processing? If you're chosen to be in that, and does it change if it's not Michael Barndahl or a different subcommittee member? And who's determining, and if the scope of work is so broad, and both of you are serving on our, the behavioral health working group that we push through. So I think that's what, my biggest hope for that part, is that, I keep calling it a North Star, or something to point to, right? That we're saying, like, oh, in this vetting process, there's so many qualified people here. We can't serve them all, but the county's North Star, or goals and priority are this, so that's why we're choosing these folks. Not just because they're great ideas, which I believe there are a lot of them.
Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair. Normally, when we have an RFP, it falls in, under a specific bucket. So we would choose those volunteers from that subcommittee that applies to it. But because this is so broad, and it applies across the spectrum, we would probably choose at least one or two members from each of those subcommittees to represent. So we have those experts on the panel.
Awesome. And I, last, Madam Chair, sorry, just to say, I, yeah, I love the, and if folks are in the portal, is that where you're going to first look? Because I just, I really want access to this RFP when it's ready to go. I think. I think I know of so many community providers, small, two-group provider, two-person groups or others that would qualify for this and how, yeah, you guys get overwhelmed. I'm glad you upped it to two million, but.
Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, um, because it's a formal solicitation, anybody would have, we wouldn't choose through the portal first. You know, we would just make sure that our our steering committees notify the people that have um, applied for funding or have submitted an idea, but it will go out for a formal publication and solicitation.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for bringing this. I'm very excited for this to get out. Do we know a date when when it'll?
If it's approved tonight. The RFP is ready to be sent to procurement this week. Uh, we just have to make the changes on the total amount, and then we would move forward that way. So, very quickly.
Great. I segue. So I will, uh, ask for a motion for approval of the small provider grant increase.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And there you go, Pam.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item ninety, Technical Services, Bernalillo County Technical Standards Update. Madam Clerk, can you please provide a resolution number?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item nine E is AR twenty-two-three dash forty-one.
And again, we have Mr. Lopez and Mr. Archuleta.
Yes, uh, Madam Chair, members of the commission, good evening again. Uh, Brian Lopez, Technical Services Director. For this item, I'd like to present, uh, for our technical standards, uh, update, uh, where we're, uh, asking the commission to adopt our amendments to the Bernalillo County's, uh, technical standards. This item is tied to the previous ordinance amendment, uh, that we brought forth earlier tonight. Um, and this is part of that effort to update our technical standards and replace the nineteen eighty-eight street standards. Bernalillo County's technical standards provide detailed guidance to the county, uh, engineers and technical staff, developers, consultants, and contractors in the design and construction of public infrastructure, improvements such as roads, sidewalks, bikes, trails, and other amenities. In addition, tech standards also specifies permits and procedures, uh, followed for approving subdivision construction plans, building permit side plans, right-of-way driveway permits, and and the like. These technical standards, as I stated, will replace the nineteen eighty-eight street standards. Um, since that time, a number of and type of public infrastructure infrastructure projects reviewed by the county have increased and become more complex, while federal and state regulation, uh, governing infrastructure, uh, projects has evolved. These changes have been, uh, have been incorporated into these tech standards, and just some brief examples, development, uh, processes, uh, which include those construction plans, some middle requirements, um, access management, uh, which is intersection and driveway spacing. Um, that has been kind of an issue on some of the older developments. We are now, uh, incorporating complete street design, uh, into our requirements. As the the previous, uh, standards are stated, those are street standards, uh, this is complete streets. And with this, we are we now have, uh, direction for including bike lanes, sidewalks, those multi-use trails, transit, and traffic calming, uh, items. Um, our standards also include water and wastewater requirements, um, drainage and green stormwater infrastructure, and low-impact, uh, development, uh, requirements, in addition to requirements for tra- traffic studies. For this item, we ask that the commission does approve the adoption of the amendments to our technical standards, and with that, I will stand for questions.
Any questions? Commissioner Olivas.
It's not a question. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to thank you for your, your whole staff's work on this, and I think as you guys know, I I get a lot of emails from my district about the condition of roads and streets, and and much of that, I think, would would be alleviated had those roads and streets been built to the the standards that are be being put forth. There's a lot of design and and things that were done out there before we had even the ordinance we're amending that are are leading to headaches that we all deal with every single day. So I I think it's very important that we update these, including you know, all of all of the elements that you mentioned, but the roadway standards, green, green stormwater infrastructure, it's a exciting development. So, thank you.
Anything else? Motion to approve?
So moved.
And seconded?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
That brings us to item nine, new nine F, which was, um, removal of certain uncollectible accounts, receivable records moved from the consent earlier. Uh, Madam Clerk, can we have a number for this item resolution?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Item nine F is AR twenty-two-three dash forty-two.
Any questions, Commissioner Olivas? I imagine you do.
I'm I'm sorry about this. I didn't know that that was sort of the protocol for the the consent agenda, that there was no discussion. So I would have made this known earlier had I known and and not disrupted the whole flow of things. Uh, I think it's a fairly simple question, but I know that that most of the debt that we're authorizing to clear here is related to solid waste accounts that have not been able to be collected. And I know that that again, it's referenced in there that we have a contractor, solid, uh, for our solid waste management that processes all that. They do the collection, and then they also, uh, you know, charge the fees. And we're basically a pass-through entity. And so I guess my concern or or my my comment on that would be so the way that I'm seeing it here is the private entity, the private contractor, uh, gets the profit from from the agreement, but when there are losses, as are associated with these accounts that are non-collectible, the county assumes the losses. Is that accurate?
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Jackie Sanchez, Director of Accounting and Budget. And, uh, yes, you are absolutely correct. So we do absorb the losses. But if you do have inquiries on solid waste, I'd like to defer that to Antonio Jaramillo, who's here to re-represent uh, the solid waste, uh, portion of this, uh, deemed, um, time-barred debt. And I just want to make mention that this is deemed, uh, time-barred debt, which actually runs through our legal department, you know, before it, uh, is presented for approval and to be written off, approved by the Board of County Commissioners. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Olivas, again, my name is Antonio Jaramillo. I'm the Director of Operations and Maintenance. The, um, solid waste, um, ordinance there is, you are correct, we do incur, uh, because it is a mandatory service, we have to provide that. And so, um, our vendor, yet, uh, basically, the way it works is, um, our vendor, um, invoices the service, um, that that they receive, and then we in turn then pay the vendor for the service. We do have, um, uh, well, let me take that back. We we had a position that would be dedic-, that was dedicated to basically working with with the, um, with the attorney to 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 go after these individuals. We do have a recourse in that, um, if, uh, we can put liens on properties to try to to gather that, um, that, uh, the amount that was not collected. However, um, uh, and and we are, we do see some success in that. But but yes, the way it is set up, um, we, um, we do incur that loss, um, based off of that four years that we cannot collect on on that.
Understood. Yeah, I I just think that's a, that's a pretty sweet deal for the contractor when when you get to keep the profit, but you get to pass on any losses to the the public to to pay. My my concern is not with our process internally or or what legal or budget is is doing with this, because I realize that's, you know, the time has expired and these can't be collected, et cetera, et cetera. But I'm I'm wondering, is there I realize these contracts are negotiated, they go through an RFP and all all those processes that we have, but I mean, is there, is there any way that this can be in the future negotiated to to a way where you know, that private entity assumes some responsibility for losses? I I run a a private business, as do, you know, a a couple of us up here, and, you know, in general, if if we see losses, whether it be through whatever it is, it it's typically the the loss of the the private entity to absorb either through insurance or through collections or or whatever it may be. And I I just I feel like that's a a bit of a raw deal for the taxpayer that that we have to bail out the solid waste management company.
Um, Madam Chair, Commissioner Olivas, uh, we do, uh, we're in the business of, uh, you know, providing a service. Sometimes we do get that profit and and that profit does come to us in in a sense. Um, but yes, we do incur that that loss as well. So with those profits, we try to absorb that, um, or or, um, and 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 look at it that way. But, um, again, a a service that we provide, uh, the intent is not to make money, is just to provide a service. So essentially, that's the way we we think of it. But, um, to answer your question, uh, we are in the second year of our, um, our contract, and in the future, we can definitely look at that. I'm working with the with the attorney to see if that's something that we could add, uh, or some type of provision in there that we can, uh, we look at to, um, to alleviate that.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Benson.
Thank you, uh, Antonio. The it is a tough position because we are, uh, providing services, and there's a lot of people who receive benefit that don't necessarily pay for it in the county. But, um, but I I think, uh, Commissioner Olivas makes a great point, especially in terms of a for-profit business. But, um, actually, county manager, can you address that?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Benson, I think county legal should address that. So I'm gonna go ahead and hand it over to Ken.
Thank you, and thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Uh, and I work with Antonio on this. Every six months, we sit down and try to figure out how to collect more. Know first of all that this is two years of the contract, but these are four years back. So there's some efforts we're making now that aren't going to be reflected in the reduction of the amount of bad debt. The services have been rendered, though. So, um, we've looked at some of these cases for collection, and examples could be that there's a owner who's renting, and the renter is no longer available, and there's this chase that goes on. There are some debts, even though it adds up to a lot, that the amount of debt to be collected is is probably not worth the collection cost, especially if you can't find it. We even have access to a really great search database and, uh, in-house people to search these people that do the collections. But hopefully, it gets better as we go on, and Antonio's come up with brilliant ideas that we're still working on. We've actually had a consultant from Florida help us on these as well. Uh, one idea was to have them go concurrently with the issuance of the tax notices. Uh, another idea is how they can become more easily collectible based upon the cycle of collection. One example is that they're collected on a quarterly basis. And unfortunately, when you're past due one, two, three quarters, it becomes insurmountable as as opposed to a monthly basis. But we did negotiate with the vendor, and two years ago, before that, we had in-house collections completely. And and so the difference is now we have more assistance from the contractor to do the frontline collections. But there still are services, the services were rendered. It's not like we're paying them not to do anything. They've gone up there and picked up the trash. So we do have a a a serious mandatory obligation to keep the place clean, the county clean, pick up the trash, and the predecessor to this was burning trash in the unincorporated. So when we stopped doing that, we worked into this process. But we'll keep working on it. These are all great suggestions. Antonio's always thinking about it, I can tell you that much for sure.
It's always on my mind.
So, um, is there a motion to approve Administrative Resolution AR twenty-two-three forty-two?
Motion to approve.
And a second, second by Commissioner Benson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners.
Thank you.
And now we're on to item ten, approvals. Department of Behavioral Health Services, Bernalillo County Department of Behavioral Health Services Care Campus Effectiveness Report. Chief Greg Pettis.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, it's an honor tonight to have, uh, Michael Hess with us, who's our data analyst for the CARES campus. Uh, Michael shared a report with me, uh, about three weeks ago, and after looking at it, I felt it was really imperative that we share that with the Commissioners. The intent of this report is really to show you the impacts that we're making every day on the lives that, uh, of people that enter the CARES campus. Far too often, only the negative is what's brought to light in what the CARES campus is not doing. And again, I feel it only fair to the staff and and those that are giving, you know, everything they've got every day to to make positive change in in people's lives credit. And I think what, uh, Mr. Hess will show, share with you tonight is doing just that, really showing you at what level we are making an impact on the lives of those in the CARES campus. So I turn it over to to Mr. Hess.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Michael Hess. I am the Data Analysis and Evaluation Coordinator for the CARES Campus, Department of Behavioral Health Services. And I've come here tonight to basically give you a bit of an overview on some of the good news that's happening at the CARES campus. There's been a lot of, uh, focus lately on some of the challenges that we've had with, um, things like turnaways and our staffing shortages. But really, what's going on, um, also behind the scenes is that there's a lot of good news coming out of the CARES campus. I'm gonna focus on a few different areas, um, but the whole, um, the whole gist of this is basically that CARES campus programs are effective in helping to change client behaviors and therefore changing people's lives. In particular, data analysis shows that, um, our supportive aftercare program, for example, reduces or at least helps reduce recidivism, uh, both at MDC and at the CARES campus, and saves Bernalillo County perhaps up to hundreds of thousands of dollars per year. Data also shows that our social model detox program, um, has some similar effects, and particularly when we're talking about working with our, um, high utilizers who receive case management at the CARES campus. Client evaluations also of our social model detox program show consistent appreciation for the detox program and, um, and its staff, um, who are often called out by name. And clients who fill out these evaluations also perceive that, um, they have, uh, they have made improvements in the quality of their life after they have participated in the detox program. And we use the data also in terms of evaluation to also, um, help drive improvements, uh, in programming across all areas of the CARES campus. I'm gonna start with our frequent or high utilizers. We initiated a, um, a protocol, um, a process by which we identify high utilizers, um, who are using, in particular, who are cycling in and out of, uh, MDC and who are cycling in and out of the CARES campus. We started that in April of twenty nineteen, and we have been doing this list regularly. Now it's basically every two months since then. Um, and we examined data, um, from April twenty nineteen through October twenty-twenty-two, and isolated our top one hundred frequent utilizers. And those are people who have been on fifty percent or more of our frequent utilizer list. And just to give you an example of what we're talking about here in terms of these clients, over that time period from twenty nineteen to twenty-twenty-two, they amassed eight hundred and seventy-one bookings and collectively thirty-five thousand eight hundred and ninety-one days in jail. That's basically ninety-eight years collectively in jail during that time. Three hundred and thirteen admissions, uh, to the detox program, uh, and a hundred, uh, one thousand two hundred and twenty-four days, and one thousand six hundred and fourteen visits to what was then our PIP program. It's now Observation and Assessment. And those are days as well, since it's a twenty-four hour, it was a twenty-four hour program. I had some cost estimations given to me by the Institute of Social Research, who does a lot of our evaluation through the, um, University of New Mexico, and, uh, from our own CARES campus, uh, administrative staff, twenty-twenty-one cost estimates. If we look at how much these one hundred utilizers have cost the county, it's nearly one point six million dollars per year using those. have cost the county, it's nearly $1.6 million per year using those 2021 cost estimates. So it's imperative that we deal with, that we work with these high utilizers. When we identify the high utilizers, we flag them in our CARES campus database, CARE Manager. And when somebody comes into the CARES campus, we alert the care, case managers so that they can make extra efforts to engage these high utilizers. The slide that I've put up here shows that, basically shows three areas that we looked at. We looked at one-year pre and one-year post for these 100 high utilizers, for bookings in MDC, for jail days in MDC, and for admissions to the CARES campus. The red highlighted lines are non, are, are basically findings that were not significant, but pretty much down the line, those who base, received case management, those high utilizers who received case management at the CARES campus, reduced their bookings, reduced jail days, and reduced their, reduced their CARES campus admissions. In particular, if you look at the MDC jail days where it says CM, and there were 41 people who received case management, this was a sample of about 66 people. Forty-one people received case management. Their jail days reduced from about 70 pre their detox, their detox session to 30, so about 40 days on average. This is a piece of good news, and as I'll demonstrate a little bit later, it's also saving the county lots of money, particularly when we add up how much those jail, jail days cost. We also looked at what are the risks of returning to the CARES campus for people who go through our detox program? The left graph on this slide basically shows on the bottom, the X, the horizontal axis is the number of days, and the vertical axis is the risk of returning to the CARES campus after a detox session. And you can see that it's very, it's pretty high right after they get out of detox, and then falls pretty precipitously down. So when you get down about 100, 100, sorry, 120 days, it falls down to practically negligible that there will be a return. On the table to the right, you'll see that for a sample of 1,676 people that we examined, 60% never returned to the CARES campus after they had their detox session, 60%. The rest, the other, the rest of them basically either returned maybe one time, that was about 20%, or 19%, two to four times, 10%, and then it gets smaller from there. So the fact that not a lot of people returned to the detox program after they, after they participate in the detox program is, it could be a good sign. There could be other reasons why they don't, but it could be a good sign, and it shows that basically we're serving a lot of these people, a lot of our clients only once, and they don't return, at least within a year. Here's some other facts about the risk of return to the CARES campus. Males are 34% more likely to return to CARES campus than females. First timers usually come, usually come once, and then oftentimes do not come again. They're 37.4% less likely to return within a year. Clients whose primary substance is alcohol are more likely, 34% more likely to return to the CARES campus within one year of having their detox, as compared to people who are detoxing from other substances. And clients in the youngest age group, 18 to 25, are less likely to make a return to the CARES campus than other age groups. I'm going to move on now to evaluations of detox. I've been there about four and a half years, and we started not long after I got there. We started asking clients to evaluate their experience in detox. We've collected about 1,000 of those evaluations, a little over 1,000 actually of those evaluations. And consistently, the evaluations have been high for the CARES campus. Now, we do have a little bit of bias in there in the sense that some clients simply mark off all the highest things, all the highest numbers, and then, and then turn it in, not really paying attention. But even when we, even when we account for that, we're still seeing very, very high scores. So to give you an idea, we've separated this out, I've separated this out on the table. We have quality of programming questions, we have impact of programming questions, and we have free comments where they are able to write out, write out some of their thoughts. For the quality of programming questions, which are like, I was treated respectfully and the staff acted professionally, et cetera, you can see that the evaluations come out to be well, almost four, well over 3.5 for most of those questions. When you look at the impact of programming, there's two of those questions that are on a zero to four basis. They basically also rate over 3.5, and there are some one to 10 questions, one to 10 scale questions, and they rate near nine. The two that I'm pointing to are, what is your overall rate, rating of treatment services that you receive from the program, and what, how would you rate the quality of the medical care you received while at the CARES campus? The other thing I want to point out is that we asked them to rate their quality of life when they came into the program and rate their quality of life as they're leaving this, leaving the program. And you can see there's a very, there's a big difference, and it's always a statistically significant difference. On average, for CY 22, for calendar year 22, can, clients coming in rated their, rated their quality of life at 6.13 on average, and at 8.57 again on the way out. So a very, a very noticeable increase in their quality of life as they perceive it. The written comments, which asked them, what did you find least helpful about your experience at DBHS, and do you have any additional comments, are almost, are overwhelmingly in praise of the staff. They often cause, call the staff out by name, thank the program in general often, and express relief and gratitude. We see a lot of things like, this program has saved my life. I don't know what I would have done without you. I probably would have died. We see a lot of those kinds of comments. Negative comments sometimes call out the staff by name. Very rarely do they do that, but it, it does happen, and they're usually expressing some kind of problem that they had with a certain staff member. But most of the negative comments are more for programming. We want more groups, is an example, or things like food quality, length, the number of smoke breaks, complaining about those kinds of things. So again, very, very complimentary, very, very grati, lots of gratitude expressed for the program overall. Any serious complaints are usually already forwarded to our quality, our compliance officer, and we also look at all those, any negative comments and review them at our Quality Assurance Committee. I'm going to move to the supportive act, aftercare and its effectiveness. This is a study we did of two, well, on the left side, 215 people who had been in the, in the supportive aftercare program. And it was an earlier one that we did. So this, so the table on the right is a little bit later. We looked at, again, many of the things that we looked at with the detox, and this time we looked at it for 18 months, pre and post. What were their admissions to detox, pre coming into the SAC program and after leaving, and 18 months after leaving the SAC program, also the PIP program and county jail, their bookings. And again, all of these differences went down, all of the numbers went down after the supportive aftercare, after their stay in supportive aftercare, and they were significant differences statistically. We then went back later on, and we looked at jail days because I think that that's probably a little bit more of a meaningful statistic than bookings. And again, we can see that, and we were able to only do this for 12 months, pre and post, but again, the bookings are, I'm sorry, the jail days went down from an average of almost 11 book, 11 jail days to an average of about just, just over six after they left the SAC program. So again, some success is there. And we also looked at their risk of return after, after being in, in the supportive aftercare program. The left graph is similar to the one as you saw with the detox, though the line, the line is a little bit more bumpy and curved. But you can see then on the bottom, we have, we measure in days and the risk on the vertical axis. Again, it falls fairly precipitously. After about 500 days, we have a little bump in the risk of return, and then it goes down to practically nothing. And I'll talk a little bit about that little bump in a minute. But what we find is that the one to highlight on the right table is that after one and a half years, which is about the median time, after about one and a half years, we find that 50% of people who have been in the SAC program have not been booked in jail, have not come back to the detox program or the PIP program or, or anything on the CARES campus. So I don't know if we call that a success rate, but 50% have not returned to jail or to the CARES campus. So this slide basically shows some potential savings by, for the, of the supportive aftercare program to the county. It's using numbers that were given to me by our administrative staff at the CARES campus and by the Institute of Social Research. So you can see that the estimated costs, cost of a day in the PIP program, and what it was called when we were measuring this, was $47.87. Detox was $572.97, and MDC was $132, $132.97. I wouldn't put too much emphasis on these numbers because they're kind of a moving target. The administrative staff at DBHS informs me that it all depends on the year and how many people we have. And Institute of Social Research told me that this is kind of a catch-all number. It also varies according to the, where the inmate is housed and other factors. But if we even put these numbers in there, you can see that there are significant savings to the county because I looked at, we looked at total client days, and you can see that, that one-year pre-admission, for instance, in detox, all of those clients, all of these clients, 231, had collective 2,808 days in detox. And after discharge, that dropped to 1,181. And you can see similar things with MDC and, and the PIP program. So the savings to the county by working with, that the, that the supportive aftercare program brings to these clients through changing their behaviors is very significant, whatever that number is. And it's probably not too far off from what I have here. The last slide I have is, I just want to highlight that we use the data to try to make improvements on the CARES campus. One example of this is a program I haven't discussed. It's our crisis stabilization unit. But we did notice by examining data that people who self-discharge usually do so after about three days. So using that data, the staff came up with a plan to do one-to-one motivational interviewing with people in the crisis stabilization unit on day two, so that they can hopefully change that pattern of people who self-discharge and doing it on day three, maybe keep them in the program a little bit longer, and maybe help work with them a little bit more and get them to the services that they need. Another example, staff noticed, one of our administrative staff noticed that there was decline in successful completion of the supportive aftercare program during the pandemic, and brought it to us. So we looked at the data, and it was confirmed. We, I brought that to our then clinical programs director, Dr. Marsha Harris, and she brainstormed with her staff to figure out why this might have been. And they came up with some solutions to reintroduce programming that had been curtailed during the pandemic, and which was seen as being valuable to the clients. And we are going to reexamine this question after a little bit of time has passed so that we can, we can see if there's any difference. And finally, a clinical man, manager had noticed that people from our supportive aftercare program, when they showed up at detox, she wanted to know why. Why did they come back? What had happened? So she came to us with a proposal, and we helped her implement a qualitative study, a small qualitative study, where clients were interviewed to ask them about what was going on, what led them to come back after they had successfully completed the supportive aftercare program. And they said that it was easy to slip into old, old habits, especially when there was times of stress in their life. So a change that was implemented, SAC clients are now given a tour of our new living room program, and, and encouraged to use it as a resource where they can drop in when those times of stress come. And I can say now that we have, because I just looked at this today, we've had about almost 500 people go through the living room program since it started in September, and 85% of those have been, of those clients have been prior CARES campus clients. And 50% of them, 50% of them have heard about the program through us. So that is my presentation. I'm open for questions.
Vice Chair, Barbara.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for that. Thank you both for bringing this. As I know we've asked for our regular updates, so it's so great to get regular and updates and information and data as you're going. I think that last point is like an exciting point to think about that. And just since opening the living room, right, we've seen, I think you said over 500 clients, more than half of them were, like, we obviously met this need when we, when we opened that up, and it's being shown by the number. I just did want to make sure, and thank you, Mr. Hess. I, you are, you are an employee of Burnalee County and of Behavioral Health Services. I just want to make sure I understand. I think I've, I've been with you on other Zooms before, but thank you. And so I guess a couple of things, I, in your dad, like even in your own analysis of the data, and I'm a little confused because these slides I think are talking about different buckets of care. So that evaluative survey, well, I guess I'll start with like, on your, in the point about your, like that you said 60% don't return to, to the CARES campus. I think even in your own analysis here, you're saying like, that could be for a number of reasons, and that this doesn't mean that they're not. I mean, I think world data shows that people, you know, recovery isn't a one-time shot. And so like the idea that 60% after one, or I think, you know, maybe, and I think we talk a lot about that data sharing and how we communicate with our partners. They might have got picked up by state of recovery, or serendipity maze, or some other program that's doing similar care. And I guess, but to that point, the folks that, I keep wanting to, so we had the 60% that don't return, so that's out of our control, about 18% that had one more visit, and then another total of about 20 that are two or more visits. And I think you even say in your analysis here, like that, that CARES should follow that, but you don't really say what, suggest what it is. Maybe it's for us to determine. But I think when we think about that, the part we can control is that 20% that, that are returning more, two times or more, right? Then that would, from your own data would say, that's our greatest population, right? Is that 20% that are returning two times or more? And so then I wonder, because soon after, you say that there's client evaluations was, you said you collect thousands of them, but in this paper, it says in 2021 that you had 151 of the 3,000 clients that, of the 3,027 clients that, that were offered that. So it's like less than 5% that offered that survey. And I know we can't force them to take the survey, but I guess if we're analyzing sort of care and return based on less than 5% or evaluations of how well the program's running, that's less, off of less than 5%. So I guess just, I'll stop there. I have some other things.
Madam Chair and Commissioner Barbo, thanks for that question. Yes, so a couple of, a couple of things in there. I'm trying not to say that the care campus is wholly responsible for the results here because it operates in a continuum of care across the community. So people who come to the care campus are getting referred out to other agencies like, I think like you suggested there. But I think it's an essential part of the care continuum in the community, that ecosystem. And so I think it's, I think in tandem with a lot of other things, it's working. It's, it's, it's enabling clients to change their behaviors. And I think it's a very essential part simply because people have to go someplace to detox, you know, you know. And so in terms of the evaluations, yes, we don't, not all, not all people fill out of, fill out an evaluation. And there's reasons for that. Some who discharge, who are administratively discharged for violating a protocol, for instance, or don't want to fill one out. Some who, some who self-discharge, it's also the same, they don't want to fill it out. And given our staffing shortages and the difficulties it has been for our staff to keep up with a lot of things, sometimes they forget to give the evaluation. Sometimes the clients also refuse to take the evaluation. So there's some reasons why we don't get as many evaluations. But we have collected a thousand evaluations over the course of about four years. So probably about two hundred and fifty per year.
Okay, well, it says a hundred and fifty on your report of the three thousand in twenty twenty-one. But and I, I guess I would be interested in the thought of data. If those hundred and fifty-one or any in that twenty percent of frequent utilizers, or even if we got down to the one hundred people that we've identified as frequent utilizers, since our frequent utilizers, they would prioritize getting an evaluation from them on the many times that they come. And, and then I just, yeah, I think I've also, I wonder, because like when we hear the SAC, I'd love to see these in numbers, right? Like if, if the SAC is, what is the population of people? Like what's the numbers that they're serving? And if that data that's saying they're coming out with less users, there's also data of who were not, like are we at capacity of filling those? So I mean, I guess that's what I want to see. Like if we have thirty beds and we're serving ten clients and those ten clients are proving not to, then what is the data, like the percentage there? And I guess just part of some of it, like I'd love to see in future data. And I want to celebrate the good wins, I'm not trying to not. But I know that too, like oftentimes I've learned that folks have been banned for the program. I'm not quite sure why. And I think that I've heard that those are mostly frequently, those frequent utilizers that are banned from the program for one reason or next. So what is our, like, plan for them? And I don't know how we ban somebody from a program.
So, Madam Chair, Commissioner Barbo, so it's rare that we ban someone from the program? And it's usually due to violent acts while they're there. We just had an individual who we had to ban who punched one of our care techs in the face, almost breaking an orbital socket, fracturing it. So there are things that happen that we're not going to allow our staff to be subject to. And those individuals, again, as rare as it is, we have to take action to protect the staff and the other clients that are there. So on the rare event that someone is banned, it's usually for three to six months, depending on what the severity of the action. But we do have to have some type of, of protection for our, our clients and our staff. And that's why we elect to ban someone. Again, we give them a lot of opportunity and this one individual was given a, a ton of opportunity and we worked very closely with him, trying to get him to cooperate. And at the end, as he's walking out, he turned around and smacked one of the, the care techs in the face. So there, there are just those certain things that we have to do something again to protect the integrity of, of the facility and what we're doing. They are rare though, and I can get you numbers if you want to know exactly how many people we have on that have been banned.
I would, or like on, even on a monthly basis, because it's hard for me to, you know, and I, I mean, we're in a community where everybody's just struggling for their loved ones or for themselves. But I've heard from multiple folks that they've been banned on their second or third time. And they say, again, word of what you say is your word, right? But that their, that their loved one is getting turned away for peeing on the building or scratching their face too much or doing something that is not best behavior, I would assume, right? But, you know, I think we have to, what is it? Yeah, I'd love to see that data.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Barbo, anytime that you hear that, please bring it to us or to me directly right now since I'm overseeing it so that I can deal with it real time. Because some of them are, are things that we've heard that happened in the past. It, it helps me to know what's relevant now and what you're hearing today as opposed to maybe a year ago or months ago. So if you can, I would ask that you bring those to us right away so that we can address them and deal with them real time, if possible.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll just close by saying thank you, want to do that and have that partnership. I think the folks, like if yours would just say a turning point, is that six months ago that we would? Because I, I mean, I think folks, like I, just a parent called me the other day and was like, I would say nine times out of ten that I've taken my loved one to the cares campus there, not admitted. And then on the times they have been admitted, twice they've been banned. So, you know, just, and yes, I'll bring those immediately to you. But yeah, I'm not picking or choosing the folks who call me either.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Olivas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Dr. Hess and Chief Pettis for bringing this before us. I think this, this is an exciting report. I, I want to be, you know, as, as generous as possible here. This is evidence of, of a program, a facility, and, and most importantly, the dedicated people that work in this facility doing something really good and successful in our community. Is it perfect? No, we, we can't point to any program anywhere really that's, that's a hundred percent of the time on the mark. There's always going to be those, those individual actors that come into the facility that are disruptive. And there's always going to be those individual employees that, you know, this isn't the right environment for them or whatever like that. And then, of course, we're confronting the challenges with the labor market, a very competitive environment for this type of professional and the folks that work in this facility under very difficult conditions. People undergoing detox are, are in a very difficult place in their life. There's serious, you know, physical and mental health challenges that that in itself causes. And this is not an easy place to work. And so, you know, it was really disheartening to see, I think, the, the treatment that this facility received in, in the local newspaper that I think really didn't totally encapsulate the, the resounding success that you're showing here. And this isn't just you coming in and saying, yeah, we're doing great work. This is, this is proved by, by data that's backed up through those high utilizers that, that are important to, to track and understand that movement. And it, and it's backed up by outcomes that are reflected in benefits to individuals, families, and, and to our taxpayers through the, the savings that are, you know, shown but never felt, right? Because when, when you save money, you, you don't, you don't get it back. You, you just never had to spend it in the first place. And so I just think it's really important as, as a county that, that we take some credit for, for some success. Is, again, is it perfect? No. And there, there are people that, that have been turned away, that are being turned away because there's not enough beds, there's not a bed at the time when they want or need to go in. That's, you know, that's unacceptable under any condition. But we're operating within a very challenging environment for many, many reasons. And so I just commend you and, and the staff of, of the cares campus for excellent work. And this is a really exciting report. Obviously, there's always, you know, room to improve and, and I, I get the, the feeling and, and I know that you're, you're always willing to, to look for that next inch, that next mile. How do, how do we move this forward? And I know that you have some supportive partners here on the commission that, that just want to see this improve and get better. But I think this is something that, that we can be proud of in, in what it is accomplishing and the successes that it is having. And, and those comments that the clients are, are making about our staff, about the programming, about this facility saving their life, that's the important headline here because this is successful and, and this is a, a, a good program and great people working here. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Benson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Hess, thank you so much and Chief Pettis for bringing this to us. I just want to reiterate what's already been said. There's a lot of positive work going on, success. I think one of the lessons, after the, I mean, I'm reading the newspaper just like everybody else and, and you'd think that nothing's happening just based on some of these articles. I think one of the lessons is, is being part of the narrative instead of just letting it happen based on who knows what sources. And, and actually with that, Madam County Manager, I think we should release a, create a press release with this information. I think the public needs to see this. And this room has already dissipated quite a bit because it's so late. And, and that's a shame because this is really great data. Mr. Hess, you're, you're excellent at, at, at your analysis and that's obvious. I think based on other things I, I have heard, I think we can focus on scaling. What we're, we're doing really well. We can scale it though, and we need to grow it and serve more people. And kind of like Commissioner Barbo was saying, now we've got numbers that we can focus on the twenty percent that are returning multiple times and try to shrink that number. And that's what a good analysis can give you. And then we can track those numbers over time and, and grow the denominator. So, yeah, well done. Thank you for, for this information. And, and thank you for serving so many people and, and helping turning their lives around. That's, that's the important part. And now we've got to continue to grow it, but well done. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for all your work. Appreciate it.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, thank you. And a special thank you to, to Michael Hess for all of his hard work. This is a labor of his and he's done a great job for it. So we'll make sure to, to build on what he's given you and give you more reports for sure.
Indeed.
Thank you all.
Thank you. With that, announcement of our next commission meeting is Tuesday, April eleventh, twenty twenty-three, zoning meeting at three P M, Ken Sanchez Commission Chambers. And then following on Tuesday, April eleventh, twenty twenty-three, administrative meeting at five P M in the chambers. And with that, if there's no other business, I call this meeting adjourned. Thank you all.